Commissioners, um, I just, what, do you want to wait a couple more minutes before we get started? Just, uh, waiting for the other, um, commissioners to join or, uh, just let me know. Uh, we're, we're ready whenever you guys are.
I'm okay with taking a few minutes. This is Kathy.
Yeah. Oh, hi Kathy. Yeah. I'm also okay waiting. Is it three of us? Is it me Kathy Lynn?
Yes.
I'm okay to wait.
Okay. Um, okay. I see we have four commissioners on and I'm not sure Commissioner Odoricio is able to join today. So I'm happy to get started if, um, Commissioner Baca, if you are good to go.
Yep, I'm good to go.
Okay, great. Um, I am sorry, I'm on my phone and, uh, the Capitol is very busy for our first day of special session. Um, so I'm going to try and keep my phone steady. Um, but we are mostly here to give you guys a quick update. Um, I have Alan here to also help me along with the update. And then I just really want to hear from you all if there's anything that you want us to prioritize or focus on as we move through the special session. Um, I think unsurprisingly, um, things don't always go to plan. So we are, um, definitely experiencing a little bit of delay at the Capitol. Um, a lot of legislation was introduced in both the House and the Senate today, most of which we were all anticipating in some way or another. Um, legislation has been moving through its first committee, but there has been some technical difficulties in the House, um, which is going to delay their ability to go to second reading for a lot of the bills that will be passing out of committee today. So the House won't be able to do second reading, um, on the bills that pass out of committee until tomorrow, which obviously will add to the schedule, uh, for the special session as a whole. We anticipate that they will be able to go to approps today. They're moving the House Appropriations Committee over to the building across the street where there isn't any technical difficulties. Um, but other than that, we, you know, we have seen, um, legislation introduced, um, around AI, which seems like will, that will be the biggest fight of the special session thus far. A lot of the other stuff seems to be moving as predicted, you know, with the normal opposition from Republicans. But, um, the AI fight, there were four pieces of legislation introduced, um, about AI, um, two of which, uh, we were anticipating and then other twos that were introduced by Republicans with no co-sponsors. So we do expect them to die in committee, but there still does need to be a hearing. Um, Alan is going to give a little bit of an update on the budget conversation. And, you know, um, a lot of that has been kind of spurring a lot of conversation with the governor's office. But I think we have a pretty significant update regarding that. So I'll hand it over to Alan.
Sure. Thanks, Gillian. And hello, everyone. Um, we haven't seen you in quite a while. Um, how about I start with some good news? Um, Eliza did have her baby girl, uh, about a month ago, a little baby Hannah that came in at a whopping six pounds. Um, so they're doing well. She's officially on leave, um, and she'll return in a couple of months, but, um, they're doing well. And, uh, she doesn't have to be here in this hot, sweaty building with us. And so I think she actually left out. Um, but yeah, so a little bit about what's going on with the budget. Um, they have to close the revenue gap in the current fiscal year, um, somewhere between 700 and 900 million dollars right now. Um, they're going to do this through a third, a third and a third approach. So, um, they're hoping to get about 300 million dollars from, um, I think it's five tax corporate local loophole bills that were introduced today. I'm hoping to get about 300 million from those. Um, they're going to dip into the state's reserve. They're going to, uh, decrease it from 15% down about two or two and a half percentage points. Um, and that'll get them about another 300 million dollars. Um, of course, that does not solve their structural problem that they have going into next year. Um, and that money won't always be there. Um, and then they'll get about another 300 million in budget cuts. Um, however, they will not be doing those budget cuts during special session. Uh, the governor does have the ability to, uh, reduce, uh, spending and, uh, cut programs when there's a revenue shortfall. Uh, so they are punting it over to the him. Um, they'll do that with consultation with the Joint Budget Committee. Um, I met with, uh, Mark Ferrandino, um, yesterday. Um, pretty much everything is still on the table in terms of cuts. Uh, there was talk that they were going to take, um, a big chunk of it from higher education. Um, that doesn't seem to be the case. They want to, they want to spread it out a little bit. Um, but they have not made any, um, clear decisions on where they'll cut yet. Um, they'll do that after session wraps up. Uh, we're expecting, we expect he'll do this through executive order, um, by September 1st. Uh, the only one we have heard of, um, that seems pretty likely is that they're going to roll back, um, the Medicaid provider rate increases that they did last session. Um, so they're going to take that back, um, which gets them a little bit of money. But, um, in terms of what's on the table, it sounds like everything. Um, so that's where we're at.
Thanks, Alan. And then I, I wanted to open it up to you all, just if there are any specific questions. I mean, we are, there are committees happening right now. I think the anticipation is that, um, they're going to at least go until Monday, likely Tuesday at this point, especially due to the, um, committee delays this afternoon. Um, and they will definitely be working Saturday. So, um, and as Alan said, it is very warm in here, but there, there are a lot of people here. So I think that that is also something to say, like, there were a lot of people here, Commissioner Pinter came down and testified in person, but it is definitely like full court press in the lobby today.
Do you have a sense that they're going to work Saturday, Sunday as well?
Um, so the plan that we, that they're saying is that they're going to work Saturday, but they are not going to work Sunday. So they'll come back Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
They are leaving Sunday on the table, um, I think to make Republicans behave. Um, but it doesn't sound like they'll do Sunday if they don't have to.
Yeah.
Um, I was able to testify on the SNAP access, the food access bill, um, with some state, uh, some county, uh, human services directors, the one from Laramie and the one from Denver. It seems like a lot of this stuff does fit with our values, but does it, do they need us? Cause I think sometimes the conversation we have, is it better to just monitor and respond if asked? Or is there anything that you think it would be helpful for an Adams County voice to weigh in?
Um, so right now I, I did receive, um, fiscal notes and like the full bill text. And I sent it over to our county attorney team just for analysis, because that is where there's an, you know, a direct county nexus as us as an employer, when it comes to the AI legislation. So I have been communicating with our team there, just better understanding kind of of the four, um, where we, where we think they're the worst one, the best one, those kinds of things. And I have, um, definitely been listening in to all the CCI lobbyists and what they're doing on that. But I think, um, I mean, CCI and CCAT are definitely the county voices down here. We're trying to help and share, you know, any data that they need. But, um, I think if someone's asking you to come down, then I, I think that that's, you know, obviously up to our individual commissioners. But for now, it does, at least Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, um, it does seem like they, they have their marching orders. Um, and there were some slight amendments in committee, but most of the amendments that have been offered and accepted are anticipated technical amendments.
I think that's right. And a lot of the bills that were introduced, it's a lot of noise, right? Um, statement bills from Republicans, et cetera. Um, the list that's actually going to get through committee and onto the floor has been pretty curated, um, by, uh, leadership. So it seems like, um, we're good.
I did get a question, um, from Robert Lundgren, uh, who works with AFL-CIO about one of the AI bills, um, that I wasn't expecting. Apparently one of the drafts right now assigns liability not to the creator of AI, but to the user of the artificial intelligence, which would mean if we use an AI system, even like Word document, you open up Word, they've got their Pilot 360 running in the background, or any one of these proposed software solutions. If we use one of those, one of the drafts right now assigns full liability to the person who uses the piece of artificial intelligence software, as opposed to the software engineer who wrote it. And they're working on some amendments. Has anyone heard about county liability or user liability for some of these larger scale, um, artificial intelligence pieces of software?
Not I, but Jennifer.
Hi Jennifer.
And I don't have the numbers in front of me. I can get them if you, if you want. But there is one that says, as, um, the county uses AI in basically employment decisions or in decisions about, um, critical government services, and that AI then results in discrimination against a protected class, we cannot use the fact that it was AI as a defense.
So the full liability would fall on us as opposed to the people who authored the algorithms?
One of them says that, and there's another bill that would then make the liability joint. And I can tell you which and which.
So the bill that's sponsored by Senator Robert Rodriguez is the one where the liability is joined, where it would not just fall on the county, it would fall on both the developer and the county. And then the, um, one sponsored by Rep. Lynn Stowe, I think, is the, um, is the other one that would, um, removes, I think, the AI company from that. But obviously Jennifer, I was going to say, is Jennifer in your office Heidi? So I think Jennifer, Jennifer, uh, can better explain that. But yeah, those are, I, obviously I think, I think about it by sponsorship. So the, the Robert Rodriguez one is one, is where it would split liability.
Yeah, that was in the packet. I, I did see that. I don't, I thought I was able to process that information.
And then the one from.
That, that feels important. That feels like a material difference for our exposure of risk moving forward. Um, is, what do my colleagues think or Gillian, Alan, what do y'all think about that weighing in on that conversation to help mitigate our risk? Cause otherwise we're taking on the full liability for the software engineers.
Can I, I'm sorry, but the one from Lynn Sett and Carter, I think then says, we have to put in our contracts that developers, developers will indemnify us if this happens. And that one is 1008.
Oh, so you like, okay, sorry, nevermind. The Robert Rodriguez is 008 and then Lynn Sett is 1008 in the numbers.
Jennifer's computer crashed right before this, so she's trying to do this on her phone.
Thank you. Um, yeah. And then I would say I did, um, in the conversations that were happening at CCI yesterday, I would say there was a bit of a divide on this understanding around the legislation. I did share that, you know, from our first glances at the bill, we did feel like the split liability was the, was more favorable to counties. Not that none of the bills make it so that there's no liability to the counties. Um, but that the one where we would split it would be a shared responsibility. Um, but yeah, the conversation at CCI was really, um, really different than I would say my conversation that I had with our county attorneys about the bills. So if we, if we want to, if you wanted to share the, the preference, I, I don't think that it would hurt. If that's what you guys agree to, of course.
I just raised the question. I'd be curious what my colleagues think.
Well, it depends on what this, what the language, is it, the ones that were in the packet. I mean, would, as I understood, that Rodriguez says you split it 50/50 with the developer. And Lynn Stet, the other one, the other bill says, no, it's all on the county. But if we're indemnified by the developer, if that's required, then what does, what's the consequence? What does that mean for us?
Is that required or we could contract for the ability to indemnify?
I don't know.
Because paying someone to indemnify you is usually pretty pricey. So if that's required, I'm fine with it. But if it's something we contract and then have to pay a premium to get, you know, what, what is that premium to get the indemnification?
Right. Where, what's going to be more expensive and what's going to be more beneficial? Or what, how much is, how much do we need to want to pay to cover ourselves that way?
Me, uh, one of the things that I'm kind of just thinking about is if we are going to deploy AI as an organization, wouldn't we do so with certain guardrails in place, knowing that obviously discrimination is something that we want to try to avoid? So I guess no matter which way it goes with the bills, which I don't know which one is going to pass. It's, it's kind of a hot mess, but regardless, what's more important is our own policy and how we internally choose to.
Okay, I'm, I, I'm ready. So the, because of the four, the Rodriguez bill has a splitting in. Um, the other one has a, um, just on us. And then the other two bills are the ones that we think aren't going to pass. Is that right?
Yes. They like, well, made it, make it out of committee.
I think to Julie's, you know, question about liability. Yeah. I mean, you know, whether we, we require someone to, to indemnify us, certainly take some liability off of us. What tends to happen in these situations is kind of like indemnification at the jail, right? With our medical provider, there's a way that they can argue it's our fault too, right? Not just the database. So I don't know that it's like, it completely gets us out of the woods. But to Julie's point, I think that, you know, we're working on policies and protocols on this that, you know, personally, I would like to see the, the county's not making decisions with AI tools, at least at this stage, when we don't have the experience and the, the knowledge to do that well, um, which would avoid a lot of the liability here.
And I, I don't know if Mr. Buck, if you can see me, but I just wanted to add to what Heidi's saying, which in September you'll be hearing the first presentation on the draft AI policy. And some of the primary principles are around complementing decision-making, but not replacing any human decision-making. Um, fairness and equity, ethical use, um, oversight to prevent discrimination. Um, some of those principles are built in and sort of the guiding, um, the guideposts for our draft policy. So I think you're all right that we, and we will shape our policy to reflect whatever else comes out of this session. But, um, those are already some of the things we have in mind is not using it to make decisions and making sure that the humans are making the final decision.
I hate that. Thank you. I appreciate that. I just was in my car, just made it to my house. Um, I don't know, is there much room for debate on AI realistically in the Capitol? Um, the sense at CCI, there's a lot of concern, but I think people are feeling disheartened that this, the decision's already been made.
Um, I would say that there isn't terrible clarity on which one will pass. The, the Rodriguez bill or the Lynn Sett bill. And Alan, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but it does seem like right now that is what is happening right now. Like the lobby is very divided and it does seem like this is going to be the biggest fight. Like which one are we gonna pass? But I don't think, I don't know if that changes any, like, I don't know if that makes it like, oh, they're going to accept amendments. I do think it's just, it's in, it's the Democratic caucus needs to decide.
Yeah, I think the proponents of each bills have, both sides have really dug their heels in. Um, so I'm not sure where they go with this, because neither bill has the votes to pass right now.
Interesting. Okay. Um, you know, the indemnification, while it sounds good, I'm kind of with Heidi that first it's going to be expensive to us. And then there is an argument very valid that they can make that as a user, kind of a buyer beware. So, I mean, well, indemnification seems, um, attractive. I don't know how realistic that that practice is going to be. I, I mean, I like where our policy is going, um, as far as the state, I think that, you know, two parties, but I think it's going to come down also to the user. And we need to be smart enough, like sourcing documents as we always have. It's just that this time it's put together for us rather than us doing the research. Um, so I don't know if I have a, an opinion at this point.
Well, how about this, like, um, Alan and Gillian, and in copulation with, uh, Jennifer and Heidi, if you see that there's, um, an inflection point where one option is much worse for us or one option is much better for us, um, and you need to let us know, um, and voices are needed. Like you know where to find us. How about, that's where I'm at, that you'll let, you'll call us if there's an inflection point where there's clarity about the local government exposure one way or the other.
Yeah, I like that.
Commissioner, can I just, I just want to make sure that I was clear. Okay, 004 Rodriguez is the one that we would, could not use. It has a defense if, if there was discrimination, we would be responsible. Um, but that we would split the cost half and half jointly several, severally responsible. 1008 Lynn, Lynn Sett, Lindest?
Windset, yes.
Um, we are responsible, but they are required to indemnify us if we ever have any actual liability. So if they have to indemnify us, it would be for all of the costs, but we would have to go through the process. The other one, half and half.
But do both of them specifically call out, we have no defense or just the one?
Both of them say that if the systems that we use result in actual discrimination against a human, that we cannot use the fact that we were using AI as a defense.
So they're, they're both equally harmful in that way?
Yes.
I, I guess I'm a little confused. And, and Julie, you were spot on with, uh, what are our policies? And taking ownership of our policies, just want to name that from the beginning. But we can have policies and best practices, but if we have an employee who takes a shortcut to use a software system to solve a problem, you know, what does that mean for the rest of us? Like, or what does that mean for the organization? Or like, for example, anyone, like, say the assessor uses it where we have no operational control over how they run their office and they use it for all the property evaluations in a single year. Like, um, clerk and recorder, the same thing, or even the treasurer. Like there are several, you know, there's the like, our employee who could do whatever they want. There's their, or, uh, departments, like, uh, their elected officials, um, where we would be on the hook for the liability, but would not have any operational control over how they use software.
So it comes down to what's going to be worse for our budget. Because if we can't use a defense in either case, it's whether we want to split the damages 50/50 or we want to pay to indemnify ourselves. I mean, that's what, that's what we would be at by picking.
That's what I'm hearing Kathy.
We're picking one that we, i- if one is significant, has a significantly higher price tag, we would want to advocate for the other one, because it's really what it's coming down to. It kind of sounds, I mean, that's, for me, that's, it seems like the biggest, uh, indic, uh, biggest decision point right now.
Yeah. And I think you're absolutely right, Emma, that a policy does not insulate us. I mean, it, it helps, right? In terms of employees get in trouble if they don't follow it, but you're, and, and we have no control over the elected offices. So I think in theory, full indemnification is better for us than 50/50. Right? Because in theory, we would recover the full amount from the vendor. So I think if you had to pick one in terms of a dollar figure, in theory, we're better off, even if we had to go through a process for indemnification, being able to get a hundred percent of it, than an agreement upfront that we pay 50%.
That makes sense to me, but if you guys need a minute, I see Jennifer like trying to do this on her phone on the fly. So if you wanted to take a minute to do some analysis, like I, I, I want to have the right answer, given I, I also agree with Julie, how messy it at least seems. Even just my walk through the building today to go say yay for food access, I saw how messy it was.
Yeah. And I would love some time to connect with Jennifer and Heidi, just to make sure that I'm understanding the differences of the, of both of them. Um, as well as the preference, like the preference, even though we know that both of them will, um, not, you know, they won't solve the problems for the county, neither of them will.
Yes. And I know Meredith in our office, who is our.
Yeah.
Expert and has been an expert on the, the law that was in place that this will be amending, um, is also looking at these. So, you know, we're, we're doing our best. It's just happened very quickly. So.
Well, and I think that that makes sense. And so if you guys could continue just like reviewing this and giving us a little bit more of an idea of which way you're leaning, and then, um, that could just be helpful as, as the process continues. Now, obviously this is going to go really fast. We're going to see what kind of engagement we could even get. Um, but, uh, yeah, no, I, it would be nice to know what is the true impacts to our county and which ones, is there one that we would be rooting for if it mattered? Um, it would be good to have that clarity.
Yeah. And I'll make sure, um, you know, in that document that I've shared with you all, I built out a chart for the four different bills and I can connect with our team and figure out kind of just writing out like, this is what this would do. This is what this would do, um, in our understanding, um, as well as just, I'll be down here and we'll try and keep you guys all updated. The one, the Lynn Sett bill is in committee right now, and so I don't know if it's going to be amended. The Rodriguez bill did make it out of committee and did not receive any amendments. Um, and it's, but it is waiting to go to appropriation. So. So um, they are currently moving. So um, we can, I can also keep our county attorney team updated, just in case there are any amendments that would be significant. Because I do know that there is a lot of lobbying and a lot of conversation happening right now.
Jillian, can you send us whatever you sent to the board? I don't think I got it.
Oh yes, of course.
Okay, anything more on this? Did you have more for us Jillian?
No, that's it.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So.
Of course.
Anything else from the board?
Nope. Was this, was this the only thing we were discussing today?
Yeah.
Okay, just double checking.
Um, and I'll keep you guys all updated as, you know, as we are able and as we move through the special session as best I can. And um, yeah, I mean, it's very, it's silly season down here for sure. So I think by the end of today, we will know a little bit more about AI, just because both of the bills will make it through their first committee. Um, so that will help at least.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks Jillian and Jane.
Thanks everyone. Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
Bye.
Bye.